Welcome, everyone. I'm going to bring this meeting to order for October 12th at 6:00. First item is... Will you follow me in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, October 16th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Great. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Daniels, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the audience or wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Great. Thank you. So I have Bill Shirley from Citrus Heights, Area 7, 8, 9, 7, 8, and 9. If you would step to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Bill Shirley, and I'm president of Chayson. And in behalf of Chayson, I would like to invite all of you to attend our Chayson meeting on October 17th. The reason for this, our guest speaker will be Erin Johansson. She is the CEO of Hope Cooperative. Hope Cooperative secured the funds and the contractors to build Sunrise Point, an affordable 47-unit apartment complex located at 7424 Sunrise Boulevard. It is also Hope Cooperative's responsibility to manage and maintain the complex. There are concerns that Erin Johansson will be addressing, which include: security, there is still no gates on the complex, and non-residents are entering the complex during the day and in the evening; reports by the residents of vandalism and car break-ins; they also mentioned the lack of adequate on-staff sighting or staffing; the children are not receiving the help they need with their schoolwork and after-school programs; and the adults are not receiving the counseling that they were also mentioned that they would be receiving. It also should be addressing the impact, major, major impact, on Woodside K through 8. And why are there no Citrus Heights residents living in the complex of 47 units? So also, just a note, Hope Cooperative is also looking to purchase the property across the street from Sunrise Point. It is the Auburn Oaks Senior Project at 7501 Sunrise Boulevard. The reason we're asking you to attend, this will be your opportunity to find out if Hope Cooperative and their partner, Stanford Sierra Youth and Family, which is also another nonprofit, are managing, maintaining, and also keeping the commitments that they made to you as a city council when they first proposed this project. Thank you. I hope to see you there.
Thank you, sir. On a quick note, though, Ash, is this a surprise to you, staff, that they have these allegations that are being made? Is this something we're aware of?
I learned about these today.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, next item, please.
And Mayor, I do have one additional public comment to read for this at this time. And the individual's name is Kevin Duval, and he states, "I would like the council to review and reconsider the billing options available for dog licensing by providing a lifetime license option for dogs that are altered and microchipped dogs. Currently, responsible dog owners have no option available to purchase a lifetime license for their dogs that are microchipped and altered. This option is limited exclusively to microchipped and altered cats. I have tried to look objectively at the differences in licensing fees, but strongly believe there is a lack of reason or justification to provide one option for one domesticated animal and not the other. I would love to hear the council's thoughts on this, but also feel that such inequity warrants a reconsideration and change to the current options for licensing."
Thank you. Okay. So let's go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
Next item is presentations. Presentation number four, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming October 2023 as National Manufacturing Month.
All right. It's my pleasure to invite Dean Peckham to the podium, please. Well, Dean, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation and then provide you an opportunity to comment.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. So proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing October 2023 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, whereas Manufacturing Day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase facilities in an effort to educate the community about manufacturing career opportunities. And manufacturers provide over 41,500 jobs for Sacramento region and 12,985 jobs nationwide. Manufacturing is a very important industry in the United States, contributing $2.2 trillion to the economy, and for every dollar spent, another $2.60 is added to the economy. And for every manufacturing worker hired, there are another four employees hired in adjacent, in an adjacent market. Whereas the average manufacturing worker in the United States earns $95,990 annually, including pay and benefits, and whereas California has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation, with representation across virtually all manufacturing sectors and small manufacturing firms, whose employees are fewer than 50, are the backbone of the industry, representing more than 95% of the manufacturing firms in California. Over the next decade, 4 million manufacturing jobs will likely be needed, and 2.1 million are expected to go unfulfilled, unfilled until due to the skills gap. Whereas increasing the exposure of manufacturing careers with our local area to our students, educators, business owners, and media, and politicians, the needed bridge, needed to bridge the gap, and skilled labor shortage, and create viable career pathways for students and adults. Whereas manufacturing, manufacturers and education systems, such as the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance, Sierra College, Los Rios Community College District, Power and Alliance, Valley Vision, Sacramento State University, California Community Colleges, United States Congress, Golden Sierra Workforce Development Board, Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, CAP, California Manufacturers and Technology Association, Society of Manufacturing Engineers, or that's a manufacturing excellence, Sacramento Valley Chapter 145, and the California food producers all work together to promote careers within the manufacturing field. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Council, the City of Citrus Heights does hereby designate October 2023 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. I have a couple of comments that are really exciting news. For those aren't aware, that we had two very large companies that have relocated to this area. They manufacture microchips, and manufacturing, that's my, part of my day job is the machining world, and there's a lot of machining part, machine parts that go into the equipment that's used to produce electronic chips. So we'll have Bosch in Roseville, that'll be their global headquarters, and we'll have Soladyne in Ranch Cordova, another $9 billion company will be producing chips in Ranch Cordova. So with that, just last week, in our cap to cap, I went back and I was lobbying Congress of representing small manufacturing companies. Again, California has about 36,000 manufacturing firms, and 95% of those firms are less than 50 people. And then Texas is the next largest state with 14,000. So we have more than twofold more manufacturing firms in California. You have two of the largest manufacturing markets. The largest one in the United States is in the Los Angeles area. The second largest is in the Seattle area. So very excited to announce that the rules for the CHIPS Act that Congress passed in 2022 is $280 billion, $280,000 million. It's a lot of money, and those are, the rules are out. The first $300 million will be distributed. Applications for grants will, are available on December 1st through February 1st. Pretty exciting time. I think we're going to see a pretty big manufacturing boom here in the Sacramento area because the Bay Area is pretty overloaded with, pretty crowded down there. So with that, I'm going to introduce Dean Peckham. I've known Dean for many years. He is, I also work with Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance, and Dean is the president of the, sorry, executive director of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance. Didn't mean to promote you there, Dean.
That's okay. Kevin's out of town right now anyway, so I'll be acting president as well.
Okay.
So Mayor Schaefer, members of the council, City Manager Feeny, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Honestly, I feel like Tim already stole my speech already, so I'm not sure why I'm up here. But all that being said, as Tim noted, Manufacturing Day is recognized as the first Friday in October, so attended a couple of events last Friday. Manufacturing, on Manufacturing Day, the manufacturers open their doors to youth and young adults, trying to inspire the next generation of manufacturing. In California and in our region, we celebrate October as Manufacturing Month. It's too hard to crowd everything into one day. We have too many schools to work with, too many youth to try and serve, so we try and spread it out throughout the month, but also throughout the year, and get the youth to connect with the manufacturers across our region. We're also out there trying to celebrate manufacturing by meeting with councils like you and participating in these proclamations. As Tim noted, SVMA was founded in 2017 by the manufacturers in the region to really address the need for a qualified and well-trained workforce, recognizing that as a society, we're going through a major demographic shift. I think we all know that. And it's becoming increasingly difficult to recruit people into the manufacturing industry. And we know that we need a qualified and well-trained workforce for the future. As Tim noted, we've got Bosch and Soladyne coming into the region. We need to have a workforce that's prepared to support those organizations as they grow in our region. We have, like I said, multiple partnerships with area and high schools across high schools and community colleges to support CTE programs in the schools, and encourage high school students to look at the region's community colleges as a pathway to earn a living, support their families and their communities, and contribute to the next generation of manufacturing excellence in our region. SVMA is also very focused on developing pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs to support the upskilling of the workforce. In 2019, 2020, with Mayor Schaefer's leadership and tireless volunteerism, SVMA launched a training program for adults at the Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center, which is located in South Sacramento. We do collaborate with our cities and our set of job centers throughout the region to create employment training programs for underemployed adults, create pathways for women into manufacturing, and also to recruit our new immigrants into the manufacturing industry, partnering with many of the community-based organizations in our region to try and reach these communities. Many of them bring manufacturing and related technical skills with them, and we're really trying to engage them to be valuable contributors to the growth of the manufacturing in the region. As you may or may not know, SVMA members in our region make a variety of products, including trains, processed almonds, tomato paste, aerospace parts, oil and gas parts, repair services, parts for the automotive industry, extrusion equipment, medical device equipment, as well as serving as second and third-tier suppliers to major corporations around the U.S. and around the globe. As Tim noted, there are over 36,000 manufacturing companies in California, more than any other state, over about 4,000 manufacturers in Sacramento region employing about 37,000 people, 1,200 manufacturers in Sacramento County, and just under 100 in Citrus Heights. But we still recognize that residents of Citrus Heights go elsewhere. We celebrate them as they pursue their manufacturing careers. In conclusion, as Tim noted, there are projected to be about 4 million unfilled manufacturing jobs in the U.S. by the year 2030, and those will need to be fulfilled through our ongoing efforts to reach out into our communities and work with our community partners to bring people into the industry. Right now, manufacturing is very focused on increasing the diversity of its workforce, recognizing that historically, it's been a male-dominated industry, so there are great opportunities out there for all people, including women, in the manufacturing industry today and in the future. Modern manufacturing today means a chance for young people to design, work in teams, and build the future. It's very high-tech, it's very high-touch, and you get to see what you create.
Very good.
So that's all I have, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dean. If you would hold right there, we're going to come down and take a picture, and I'm going to present the proclamation to you.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Where do you like to do these, on the other side?
I would like to do it right here. Okay.
Okay. Okay. There you go. There we go.
It's good this way. The podium's a little bit in the way, so it's a little bit. All right. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming October 8 through 14, 2023 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week.
Portion, would you be so kind?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Police Services Supervisor Deborah Nathan to the podium. I'll read the proclamation, and please afterwards, give us a few words. It's only like 12 pages long, so hold on. Whereas, it's a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October 8 through 14, 2023 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas, Code Enforcement Officers provide the safety, health, and welfare of citizens and communities throughout the state of California throughout, through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances addressing various issues of building, zoning, housing, environmental health, life, and safety. Code Enforcement Officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and well-trained professionals with a shared vision of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And Code Enforcement Officers often have a highly visible role in the communities that they serve, and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as Code Enforcement Officers. And Code Enforcement Officers have challenging roles and many rewarding outcomes by working to improve the quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities. The role of many Code Enforcement Officers is further satisfied when working with our community members to help safeguard our citizens' properties, businesses, fostering vibrant communities, and contributing to thriving communities. And the state of California wants to recognize and honor Code Enforcement Officers in our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve the quality of life within communities.
Well done.
And, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. We don't have a plaque long enough for that, sorry. And do hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service of individuals who serve as our Code Enforcement Officers.
Well done.
Well done. If you don't mind, I'd like to have my team join me up here today.
Please do.
Doesn't matter. Pick your spots. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Daniels, and members of council. I am the Police Services Supervisor Deborah Nathan for your Citrus Heights Police Department. On behalf of Chief Turcot, Commander Russo, Manager Campbell, we are here today to celebrate an amazing team. I stand before you with a heart of gratitude and appreciation for the incredible team surrounding me. As we gather here during Code Enforcement Appreciation Week, it is my privilege to acknowledge the contributions of our dedicated code officers. I want to acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment that our team has consistently demonstrated. Their collective efforts and contributed, or efforts have contributed to our organization's success through our partnerships with the community and business owners. It is with great pleasure that I take this moment to recognize and introduce you to our Code Enforcement Team. Teresa Dawn, Angelique Clark, Michael Yost, and Dominic Grillo. Thank you for everything you do, the sacrifices you routinely make, and the professionalism and care you exhibit daily for our community and department. I want to thank City Council for recognizing our fantastic team celebrating Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Great.
All right. For the fun part, let's go down.
Can I say something before we leave? I just want, just on my, on behalf of me, I thank you not just for this week, but every day of the year is code appreciation, people will appreciate you for what you do, because you make our city look better, and you make our neighbors happy when they complain about their neighbors. And so you, you know, all in all, it helps the quality of life, and you do contribute to that. And I know you put yourself into some situations that are not safe, and so stay safe on your future trips to all of our weird spots of the city.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words.
All right.
Yeah, they ticketed my house once because I had a 1917 Mack truck that was parked there. I thought it was yard art. They thought it was not.
Okay. So we're going to take just a quick little recess right here while Councilmember Middleton takes a little, tear of a little business. So you're welcome to, oh, perfect.
Three minutes is over.
Well, it's, now we're going to wait for Jane to get back. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting now, and we are, how about the next item, please?
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
All right. So let's start out with Dr. Jane Karpinski-Costa.
Thank you, Mayor. This week hasn't been too bad. I had a mosquito, mosquito meetings next week. My mosquito update is, though, kind of, mosquitoes are kind of getting sparse in these cool weather, so it's not as big a deal right now with West Nile. So far, we've had 39 cases in our district with three deaths, so the seriousness of West Nile is upon us. But I did go to the sewer meeting yesterday, and there is good news and bad news about the rate increase. The bad news is, is a rate increase. The good news is that they haven't raised their rate in, the regional sewer hasn't raised their rate in like 13 years, but with the cost of electricity has gone up for the district, the cost of chlorine has like quadrupled. So the cost of employment, our labor costs, our project costs, everything's costing more. So they, the district will do a big outreach campaign, will send you things in the mail, will make presentations to the neighborhoods and to the city council to talk about the need, the necessity for the increase. It, to me, it's significant because the district is going to combine, right now, your sewer bill says regional sand and local sewer, so you pay two different amounts. Well, once the sewers combine, it's going to look a little different on the bill because it's all one district after the first of the year, so it's going to look like a bigger bill because it's two of them combined. Basically, it goes up $13 a month. So garbage was bad enough, but smud's going up, water's going up, everything's going up. But, you know, the district has been a very good steward of the funds. They have done projects under, under budget, ahead of time, have gotten grants for a lot of the projects that we've done. They, they're, I just so amazed at how well you can handle 750 employees and everything else that they do and accomplish. And so I, I support the increase in the sewer rate. It's going to be for three years, and then it's going to be nothing. So you, it was, the choice was to spread it out over five years. You'll get a 218 protest, you know, a possibility, all that will come to you as information that you can protest it if you want. But we had the choice of going over five years, and it would've been a dollar less, like whoopee. Or do it fast, get it over with, rip the Band-Aid off, you actually pay less over the five years than you would if we stretched it out. So it's going to be for three years, the increase is just tiny after the first one, and then nothing for after that. And if we find that we overestimated, it'll come down. That's one thing about the district. The last time there was a rate increase was 2013. That was when they were building the Echo Water Project, and they got authorization from you, by the lack of the protest, to go up to $39 or $37, and they never did.
On July 19th, for anyone who was interested in applying for funds to learn about all the requirements of CDBG and what would be expected of them if they receive funding. Applications were due on August 7th. Staff reviewed those applications. We put a report together and met with Quality of Life, which is Mayor Tim Schaefer and Council Member Janet Kurbinski-Costa. That was September 5th. And then September 27th, the draft action plan with those recommendations was released. And then we're here tonight to hear public hearing on the action plan, and then we'll be back on the 26th for final adoption. So the applications that we received, we received five of them. I'm going to quickly go over them. We do have members of the applicants here tonight to also provide some public comment. So the first one being Jake's Journey Home. This is a new request. They requested $50,000. This is for Mobile Homeless Support Services. So Jake's Journey Home is located in Folsom. They are a fairly new nonprofit. They've been in existence for about three years, and they would be providing assistance to the at-risk of homelessness or those that are experiencing homelessness, providing them with essential services. And the funding would go towards staff time and program costs. If they didn't receive the full $50,000, they would have to cut back on their hours and their clients served. And they are proposing to serve about 50 individuals. And the next one is Campus Life. They submitted an application for $20,000. This is the after-school program on Sayonara Drive. Campus Life has been operating the center out on Sayonara since 2004. They're open five days a week, and they are open some weekdays during the summer. They provide a wide range of activities that's listed here on this slide. Additional is flag football. They also, the youth participate in the Citrus Heights PAL basketball leagues. A new program this year is the Junior Achievement Program. This is a seven-week educational program that's going to address some financial education and career readiness. So their funding will go towards personnel costs, and it'll serve about 105 youth. Community Link Capital Region, also known as 211 and Project Sentinel. They submitted an application for $23,000. This is our Renters' Helpline Program. So this program is going to reduce housing discrimination, promote public awareness of fair housing laws and rights, and assist persons with disabilities. The city is in a regional cautionary agreement, so this is the amount that the city's portion of this program, and it's based on the number of rental units each jurisdiction has. So 211 will provide a telephone, the Renters' Helpline service, as well as counseling dispute, resolution, and education. And then the other portion of it, Project Sentinel will accept referrals from 211, and they'll conduct intakes to determine the need of counseling and/or investigation of any fair housing issues. So their funding will go towards staff time, and they'll serve about 425 households. Next one is Meals on Wheels. They submitted an application for $16,000, and they've been providing services to seniors in Citrus Heights since 2010. There's two parts to this program. The first one's the Congregate Nutrition Program. They'll serve about 25 seniors. It's about 500 meals a year. Currently, they do not have a cafe site here in Citrus Heights. They were operating out of Rush Park. Staff has had conversations with staff at Rush Park to bring back that program there onsite. So in the meantime, we're encouraging seniors to attend the nearby cafe sites. The Home Delivered Program is the other portion of this activity. They'll serve about 160 seniors, which is about 3,500 meals a year. A senior can receive a frozen box of five meals weekly, or one hot meal daily, Monday through Friday. And the cost per meal is $4. So all of the funding will go towards the cost of the meals, and they'll serve approximately 185 seniors. And Sunrise Christian Food Ministry is requesting $43,000. And this is an emergency food closet. They've been receiving funding since 2016. They provide a lot of services there onsite and offsite. They have the drive-through distribution. They serve about 150 to 180 families a day, up to 100 to 150 pounds of food. They also, with the food that they are not able to distribute through the drive-through, they deliver to San Juan and Sayonara families. They go out to Vintage Oaks and Citrus Heights Heart. Those organizations also receive food as well. And a new component of this program is the home delivery service. So if you call 211, you're in Citrus Heights here, a household can receive a home-delivered box of food. They have partnered with DoorDash, and DoorDash will pick up directly at Sunrise Christian Food Ministry and deliver it to the home at no cost. They are open five days a week, 11 to 2:00, and they're located at Advent Lutheran Church on San Juan. And their funding will go towards staff time, and they'll serve about 5,000 individuals. So with that, the Quality of Life made some funding recommendations, and we just went over the organizations. And the middle column is the amount that each organization requested, and the last column, the Quality of Life Committee recommendations. So we recommended funding Campus Life and Meals on Wheels at their full amount. 211 and Project Sentinel, as I mentioned, that's a cautionary agreement, so we're obligated at this amount. Sunrise Christian Food Ministry received the remaining funds. At this time, Jake's Journey Home was not recommended for funding. They're a fairly new organization, and we just gone into a new partnership with the county and Sacramento Health Works to provide navigation services, a community-based navigation program here in the city. So if we find that we need additional services, we can always invite Jake's Journey Home back and apply for CDBG funds. The second recommendation is to fund the residential street resurfacing project with the $390,000. So repairing damaged sidewalks and installing ADA-compliant ramps. So with that, we'd like to hear any public comment on the draft action plan and the funding recommendations, and then to continue this item to the October 26th council meeting.
So before we get to the public comment, should I ask for council comment? Is there any comment from the council?
No, I have questions if they speak.
Okay, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'd like to invite April Jasek from Sunrise Christian Food Ministry.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you tonight and give you an update on everything that's happening over at the food closet. It's a very exciting time. Do you have the presentation? So this year will mark our 40th year over at 5901 San Juan, where we've been serving families facing food insecurity. We started out serving 25 families a week, and we're up to 150 to 180 families a day. That makes up, usually our average family size is five to seven, so multiply that out. We're serving 400 to 700 people a day over at the site. It continues to grow every year. Last year, we're up 20% this year over that, and I expect it to continue to grow. With this new legislation with organic waste, it's actually pretty fantastic that we have all these resources to give to families. They are getting a more robust, healthy, and complete food distribution than they ever have in the past. Our main partner agency that supports us is the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. They subsidize about 60% of the food that we receive. It's federally funded through the T-Fat program. The rest of the food comes from local stores in Citrus Heights, where we pick up food that would otherwise be waste in the next couple of days. We pick it up every day, seven to 10 stores every morning. Last year, we picked up a million pounds of food. So our volunteers do a fantastic job of picking that up, sorting it, and getting it into tummies before it becomes trash. These are some of our stores that support us, and some of the local agencies that we're able to also support with food that does not go out to our community. There's just an abundance of food, so we're so grateful to these stores to be able to offset some of the cost at these other local agencies, so that that doesn't come out of their bottom line. We're always short on volunteers, so I'm doing a plea here. I'd love for anybody that's just sitting around, has some free time, please use that QR code. Come out and visit us. Come in and pray with our clients. Come and shovel through some moldy strawberries. We need all the help we can get. It's a really dirty and busy time right now, but we could use all the help we could get. These are some of our new partnerships that we've taken on in the last six months. Sayonara Center, we've started doing a monthly food distribution onsite. We realized that transportation was a challenge for the families over on Sayonara, so once a month, we take the food to them. It'll be this Friday that we'll be doing our second one. We had about 25 families the first time, and we're hoping to double that in the next couple of times. And Living Water does our homeless respite on Mondays, and also Hot Dog Fridays. So we support them, so that more of their money can go towards their overhead costs and keeping those centers open. Vintage Oaks, we do a monthly produce distribution. They have a senior box distribution that comes out, but that's non-perishables, and they were really wanting to have fresh produce come to them, so we made that happen. We're in about our seventh month of doing that, and we're up to about 60 families or individuals that receive that fresh produce, and it's about 20 to 30 pounds of fresh produce each month. This is a very exciting thing. It's just started in the last month. We saw a need for seniors to have a slower, more relaxed, and focused time to be coming to get their food distribution. Some of our other clients are rushing between their lunch hour, dropping kids off at school, and it was making a very harried experience for our seniors. So we moved to have the first hour of every day to serve seniors and disabled and homeless. And it's working out really well. Our numbers have stayed the same. We're serving the same amount of people, but the seniors are able to receive their food at a pace that's easier for them to manage, and also it gives us time to pray with them and figure out what's going on in their lives aside from food insecurity. And marking our 40th year, we wanted to invite the community to come out and celebrate with us. On October 28th, we'll be holding an open house for any community members to come out. Our volunteers will be doing appreciation luncheon for them at the same time, too. So we just want to thank you for all your support, and we couldn't have made it 40 years without you, and we're looking forward to the next 40. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question? Dr. Janet Kurbinski-Costa has a question.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you for taking advantage of our block party trailer.
Yes, we are very excited to get that out onsite. Yes.
My question is that your request is for paying staff. How many paid staffs do you have?
It's four positions, but currently only three of them are filled. So we have--
So one person that's just paid right now?
No, there's four paid positions. Three of them are currently filled.
Oh, three are filled, one is vacant.
Yes. We have a director, assistant director, and a logistics person that handles all the donation pickups.
And the rest is all volunteers?
Yes. Yes. And those paid positions have only been in the last year and a half. The previous 38 years were 100% volunteer. It's run more like a business now. It wasn't a million pounds of recovered food in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, so the next person we'd like to invite to the podium is Therese McWilliams of the Community Link Capital Region.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I am Therese McWilliams, and I'm the Director of Housing and Care Coordination over at 211 Sacramento. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about the Renters' Helpline. So just a little bit of an overview. Community Link Capital Region houses three different programs. One that most folks know about is 211 Sacramento, where we are an information and referral line connecting folks to the different resources and services throughout the community. We also house Hands on Sacramento, which is the regional agency on volunteerism. And the agency I'm going to talk a little bit about today is the Renters' Helpline. And the Renters' Helpline is focused on connecting folks to education and empowering folks to understand their rights as tenants and to be able to, excuse me, understand their rights and responsibilities as tenants. Some of our partners with the Renters' Helpline are Project Sentinel, who provides some investigation on fair housing and discrimination cases. Also, Legal Services of Northern California, which provides legal assistance, litigation in cases that are deemed appropriate. And then also, a new partnership and collaboration with 211 Sacramento, which again is an information and referral line. This is just a couple of the funders. So Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, Sacramento County, the City of Elk Grove, Rancho Cordova, and of course, Citrus Heights, the City of Citrus Heights. So a little bit about the Renters' Helpline and how we are aiming to help the community, again, to promote the education of tenants and landlords about their rights and responsibilities. The Renters' Helpline in-house offers three different, excuse me, four different languages, but also has access to hundreds of languages through a translation line to help folks who are speaking languages other than English, and offering some specialized services. So again, things like tenant landlord dispute, excuse me, dispute resolution, providing referrals and resources for legal assistance, and identifying those housing discrimination So for our 23-24 year, we have some service goals for the City of Citrus Heights specifically. So supporting approximately 425 residents to navigate through different resources, offering 42 specialized prevention services, and addressing a variety of needs. So as you can see on this slide here, there's a variety of needs that are coming in as it relates to housing, but things like housing repairs, rental increases, termination of tenancy, eviction, security deposit refunds, reasonable accommodations, and then of course, those tenant protections. So the Renters' Helpline is newly integrated with the 211 line, and there's a partnership that is now in existence, and we're really excited about it. So the Renters' Helpline is accessible through an existing toll-free line, as it has always been, but now it's also going to be accessible through the three-digit dialing code, so you can dial 211 to connect to them as well. This partnership is really exciting because it's going to allow for the Renters' Helpline staff to access existing resources that are housed within the 211 resource database. And that resource database is maintained by a team who are communicating with community partners and agencies to make sure that the information is up to date and accessible for our community. And again, the Renters' Helpline staff will now be able to access that to make what we call warm handoffs and connections for folks that are calling in needing to utilize Renters' Helpline services, but who may also have a need for food, or who may have a need for medical resources that they don't know how to access. And so the ability to sort of cross-refer is really exciting at this point. I wanted to just share a little bit about what we've seen at 211 Sacramento in terms of needs from the City of Citrus Heights. And so we just took a little bit of our data to show that in the City of Citrus Heights, we've fielded about a little over 2,900 calls in the last fiscal year. And as you can see, the majority of folks are needing assistance with housing-related issues. So that's why it's really exciting to have this partnership and this cross-referral process with the Renters' Helpline. After housing, it was legal assistance, and then after that was utility assistance. This slide shows a little bit about the agencies that 211 referred folks to in the Citrus Heights area. And I'll just point out that Sacramento Self-Help Housing was one of the top agencies that we were referring to, probably related to issues like the Renters' Helpline. And so we're really happy to be able to continue that support with those staff coming over to the 211 side and integrating in that way. Thank you all so much for your time, and thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
Hang on one second. I think we might have some questions. Who'd like to go first? Jane?
Thank you so much for your report and being here. Question for you. A couple slides back, you have your goals. What are your numbers so far looking at against your goals for 23-24?
So I really wish that I had this, but the Renters' Helpline was just integrated, and the line just became active literally a week ago, if I'm not mistaken. So the numbers are not yet available in that way, but we have kind of implemented a soft launch, and so we are hoping to have some numbers very soon about the number of calls that we've been fielding and the needs that we've been seeing. But again, very recent that the line has become live again.
Thank you. My last question is, is 211 a 24-hour call line?
211 is 24 hours. The Renters' Helpline staff are currently soft-launching Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Jane?
Do you do any advocacy or participate in someone who does advocacy for, you know, seems to me you'd have the numbers countywide that would support certain measures that would help the people you serve, because you would have, say, 4,000 people need this. And so do you do any advocacy?
When you say advocacy, do you mean sort of--
To the various people who fund some of these, I'm not even sure where you'd-- It seems each topic would have its own direction. So homelessness is one. Utility assistance, you would advocate to SMD or to the utility providers.
Oh, about sort of reducing rates, for example? Is that what--
Or rebates, or yes, lifelines. I'm not sure that the lifelines that are granted to the low-income people are sufficient anymore. You know, in the old days, maybe it was, but I don't know that they've gone up much since inflation's gone up. So I don't know who advocates for those numbers.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to answer your question specifically. I am stepping in for our executive director.
Well, it's okay. I mean, you provided great service, and so I'm not criticizing. I just don't know if you did any.
No, no, no. I just want to make sure I'm answering it fully. I will say that our resource team is very active in seeking out resources and updating resources and trying to find as many relevant resources based on the needs that we're seeing coming in. So our database is living, I would say, and we're constantly seeking out ways to make sure that the resources we're providing are accessible and relevant, and that department is really focused on that.
And you probably develop a communication with some of these resources, so they keep you informed as to when they change policies or whatever.
They probably get tired of the emails and calls that we make. But yes, absolutely.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
A little. I do have a question with regard to, a resident, I spoke to her, and she was mentioning to me she had to move out of Citrus Heights because every August, her apartment complex raises the rent 9%. That seems excessive. I don't know what-- We don't have rent control here, so I suppose the market, if the market will bear that, that's what they do. What are the-- If somebody called you and said, hey, you know, the raise in my rent, is you already paying 1,700, it's going up to 1,850? 1,859, I think she said, she can't live there anymore. So, and she's elderly, she's on a fixed income. What kind of resources would you-- I mean, it's not really to say, well, we'll pay you, you know, pay three months' rent. That's really not a sustainable situation. What kind of-- Are you have any kind of negotiators that can call the landlord and say, hey, wait a second, this seems a little excessive? You're really creating a burden on certain people? I'm just curious what-- If she were to call 211, what could they do for her?
Yeah, I would highly encourage her to call. So our staff will utilize that database to look for resources that she's eligible for. And so maybe that is some advocacy in the sense that they would call on her behalf, landlord-tenant dispute resolutions, helping her to identify different resources that might exist, like you said, to maybe augment or support some of that financial burden. But then also helping folks to understand what else is out there, because there are resources available to subpopulations, so someone who maybe is a senior, or someone who has a disability. There are things that exist that maybe that person might not know about. And so we learn more about her situation and then, you know, scour our database to try to identify resources that could be useful.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. I really appreciate it. All right, so the next speaker we have is Julie Habib of the Sayonara Center.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Julie Habib, and I'm the Director of the Sayonara Center. I do apologize that I don't have a great visual for you all, so you're all welcome to come by the center anytime. And we also have a Facebook page with a lot of great photos on there, because we do have a lot of fun. In August, we began our 12th year in our building. The school year has been off to a great start with our students. Before they went back to school, we were able to provide each of them with a new backpack and school supplies and a back-to-school photo. We're open to our students five days a week, for them to come after school, receive a full meal, help with their homework, and be in a positive environment with their friends, our volunteers, and the center staff. As the holidays approach, we can't help but be excited for all of our center traditions. Next week, we will host our family pumpkin carving night in our parking lot. Last year, over 60 pumpkins were carved. It was really messy, but very fun. We will also attend trunk-or-treat at the police station later this month. Our focus is children and youth in first through 12th grade, but we deeply care for our students' families and our students who have finished high school and have aged out. For our students' parents, they are able to come to a monthly dinner and class offered in both English and Spanish. For our alumni, we have a quarterly reunion dinner for them, but they're always welcome to drop by, and many do so weekly. Many of our students come from families who are undocumented, and English is not their first language. So we try to bridge the gap, so they can participate in all this community has to offer. Through partnerships in the community, we have had students participate in martial arts, basketball, football, baseball, and soccer leagues. We currently have 14 12th-grade students attending the Sayonara Center. Seven of them have been with us since they were in first grade. We're excited to attend their graduations and offer them free family and graduation photos in May. At the Sayonara Center, we are a family. Many students are siblings and have cousins attending as well. But for those of us who are not blood-related, we have created a family-like culture, seeing each other many days a week. We get to walk alongside them in life and celebrate their accomplishments, such as getting an award at school, their driver's license, their first job, asking a date to a dance, graduating high school, and being the first in their family to attend college. We also get to be there when they experience heartbreak, have a conflict with a friend, they don't get the job they interviewed for, they have a parent diagnosed with cancer, and have an uncle shot and killed at a nearby park. August was a very difficult month for all of us. In the beginning of the month, a Sayonara Center neighbor was shot and killed just 100 feet from our building. He was only 22 years old. This past summer, we would see him running up and down the street, playing with the children, having squirt gun fights. That was really fun to see. A few weeks after that, a Sayonara mother of three lost her life due to domestic violence. It shook and broke us all. Our goal is to provide all our students with opportunities and new experiences that they might not be able to have without us. We also want to be a light to all we encounter and give them hope for their future. On their good days and even on their bad days, every student is welcome at the Sayonara Center. We are grateful to be a part of this amazing city. Thank you to each of you for your continued support in making all of this possible.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to remind you, though, when you do your pumpkin carving, don't forget your organic waste bucket for all of the--
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any?
I just wanted to make a comment. I've had the pleasure of serving your students, and the energy there is just so much fun. The adults are very caring and loving. You could see that. And you have longtime volunteers who really have a heart for what you do, and you can tell that you're making a difference in these young people's lives. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'd like to invite Jennifer Mcello from Meals on Wheels to the podium, please.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Jennifer Mcello, and I'm the Director of Programs for Meals on Wheels by ACC. Thank you very much for your support. We've asked for $16,000. We've asked for $16,000 to serve 185 seniors in the city of Citrus Heights. And thank you to Nicole, she did a great job of breaking down what it is exactly that we do. Since we last spoke last month, you asked us to try to move some of those folks that were on the waitlist off, and we have had some movement. We managed to get 13 on the program and three more are in the final stages, so should be approved in the next week or so, so we've made some progress there. But in that time, we've had another 18 come in, so we're gonna keep moving those. So we're, we're making progress. Thank you again to Nicole. She was able to find the name of the new director at Sunrise Wacken Park and put us in touch with him, so we're hoping to make a connection and start some meetings. When we called them earlier this week, later, late last week, they also suggested Crossroads might be a good place to hold a cafe, so we are continuing to look for another cafe and we're hopeful, you know, the lights are not completely out for us at Rush Park. We're, we're hopeful. We have not removed our equipment from there yet, so we're hoping. The other thing that's happened is that the Citrus Heights Messenger reporters gave us a call, so hopefully that will help spread some awareness that we're looking, and we also need volunteers in your community. Pretty much, it has been a kind of a busy month, but before I go, I would like to invite all of you to join us for a ride-along sometime and just ride-along on the home-delivered meal routes in your area, Citrus Heights, if you would like to join us sometime.
Absolutely.
I have been on a ride-along and it's a great experience. It's, the people look for the, your volunteer, they go to the door, they, if he's a minute late, they worry about him. And it's, it was a good experience and I do encourage fellow council members to try it out. It's, it's good.
Thank you.
Your volunteers are incredible.
Thank you, they are.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Oh, Mayor, I did have two written public comments to read into.
Never mind.
The meeting, so. With that, we received a written public comment from Alfred Sanchez. He states, please fund Sunrise Christian Food Ministries. They are an essential part of our community. They have dedicated volunteers who donate their time to make this possible. Many people rely on them in tough times. And the other written speaker comment I have is from Carol Kahn with Project Sentinel. Project Sentinel wishes to thank the city of Citrus Heights for its continued support to affirmatively further fair housing protections in the city. We are grateful to be doing this work on behalf of residents experiencing housing discrimination. This funding allows us to investigate housing discrimination complaints and also educate housing providers and property management teams about the federal and state laws that govern fair housing to eliminate and prevent discrimination. Our plan in this new fiscal year is to continue to invest in our outreach, education, and investigation of housing discrimination complaints, which complaints have included in Citrus Heights and throughout Sacramento County, disability discrimination, source-of-income discrimination, and sex discrimination. This year, we are also providing testing and investigation of discrimination experienced by residential providers of childcare services. We look forward to our continued partnership with Citrus Heights to ensure that the barrier of housing discrimination is not occurring in the community. We thank you again for your unwavering support of our work. And that concludes the written comments.
Thank you very much. Now I'll close the public hearing. So are there any other questions from council members now that we've heard all the public testimony? So I do have a question about the agenda. Why are we continuing, because I'm looking at the long-range calendar for the 26th and it looks like that might be a heavy meeting as well. Is there any reason we can't close this out tonight?
For our citizen participation plan, it needs to be adopted. And then, so it has to be adopted 45 days by the end of the calendar year, so October 26th was the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so, so this is just kind of a, there's no, there's no action to be taken here, even though the calendar, the, it shows them.
We can put it on the consent calendar next time, just.
Yeah, can we do that? We put it on the consent calendar?
We can look into that. We have not done that in the past.
Any issue with that?
Whichever way it goes, it'll be a very, should be, unless the council wants it otherwise, should be a really quick item.
Okay, all right, very good. So let's move on to the next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is Sylvan Corners Subdivision 7137 Auburn Boulevard. General Plan Amendment, Rezone Tentative Subdivision Map, Design Review Permit, Entry Permit. The recommendation, there are four resolutions for council consideration and an introduction of an ordinance amending Article 5, Chapter 106.50 of the zoning ordinance and rezoning the property into the Sylvan Corners Special Planning Area.
All right, so let's see here. You wanna go ahead and?
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudas with the Community Development Planning Division here tonight to present to you the Woodside project, what we're calling Sylvan Corners Development. The project, the site we're talking about is a property well-known to the community, Sylvan Corners, here at the corner of Old Auburn, Auburn, and Sylvan. It's a site of this former Sylvan Middle School. So overview of the project, this is an 11.34-acre vacant site. The proposal is to develop 94 residential homes on the lot with six open space lots on the site. It'll be single-family detached for-sale units with a mix of housing types, including 70 traditional homestyle lots and then 24 alley-loaded units. The traditional lots range in size from about 3,000 to 5,000 square feet, with most being in that lower 3,000 square foot size. The alley-loaded lots range from 2,600 to about 5,700, with most of them being in the 26 to 3,000 square foot size. The traditional lots are a mix of single-story with single-car garages and, and then some two-story with two-car garages, and the alley-loaded are all two-story with two-car garages. A background on the project, as mentioned, this was the site of this former Sylvan Middle School. Sylvan Middle School relocated to the elementary school that's adjacent to this. San Juan Unified School District closed that middle school, reformatted the adjacent elementary school to the middle school, and then eventually removed all the buildings on the property and put the property up for sale. The city did purchase the site in 2019 from the school district and then wanted to act as kind of controlling the site's future. We're very interested in this site, you know, it really is the physical heart of, of the city, so we wanted to have control over what happened there. So the city did purchase it from the school district, not to be the developer of the site, but to be the property owner, but to choose the development, the development partner for the site. The city did release the Offerment Memorandum and had selected Woodside Homes for this project. Several entitlements are proposed tonight that we'll walk through. We have a general plan amendment that will change the land use from the public to medium-density residential, a rezone request to change the zoning from RD2, which is a low-dense residential zone, to a special planning area zone, a zoning text amendment that creates the Sylvan Corners SPA, the map to actually divide the, into the 100 lots, 94 units with the six open space lots, and a design review permit for the review and the extra elevations of the proposed homes, and then a tree permit for the tree removals. First, we'll talk about the general plan amendment. General plan identifies land use of the property. It's really a broad definition of the activities that can occur on a site. So there's broad, like, some general plan designations are commercial, they're residential, they might need, be business professional, so very broad. This site did have a general plan amendment, land use identified as public, and it's proposed to change to what we call a medium-density residential. So the site had a land use designation of public, which was the appropriate land use when it was used as a school. Public land use is applied to properties where you have schools, you might have a post office, and you have public facilities. So that was the appropriate land use at the time the site was used for a school. With it proposed to be residential, it does need a residential land use. The medium-density land use is selected because it allows a density range from nine to 20 units per acre. So proposed tonight is to amend the general plan land use on site from the public identification of land use to the medium-density residential. Also included in that is a rezone. As mentioned, the general plan land use is a broad category of the uses. The rezone gets more specific on a parcel-specific basis, so to address this development, it does need to change, be specific to that zone. So the medium-density residential allowed the nine to 20 units per acre development, and the rezone then identifies even more specific in that range. So the property was zoned RD2, which is a very low-dense zoning designation. It is RD for residential development and the 2 represents the density. That was an appropriate zone for a school, as schools are allowed in a residential zone. So that land, that zone has been on that property for the school and is a very low-dense zoning designation. So to reconfigure the site for this development, the zoning needed to change and it's been chosen to go to what we call an SPA or a special planning area. The special planning area, what we refer to as Sylvan Corners, will change the density to a nine-dwelling units per acre would be the density for this site. The special planning area designation, it's used on properties where there's, needs to be some uniqueness or some special considerations that the standard zoning, development standards don't apply. So other SPAs in the area are like Mitchell Farms, where you have a mix of housing types. You had some open space, so the traditional zoning standards were very difficult. You couldn't get a development to move forward the way you wanted it to if you applied standards, the traditional standards, so they're created into an SPA. So Mitchell Farms is an SPA, Abbey's Gate, the development on Mariposa, was, was an SPA, and Greenback Woods is another SPA in the community. So proposed tonight is the Sylvan Corners Special Planning Area. It will allow a variety of housing types that we'll talk about, and it will have some unique standards applied, so allows the smaller lots, allows the alleys that we'll refer to, it provides for the neighborhood gateways that are part of the development, and increased lot coverage and allows the nine units per acre. Some highlights of the project, this is a home ownership development, so all homes would be built and sold by Woodside Homes for home ownership. 14 of the units out of the 94 proposed will be sold to lower-income families. The development will be managed by an HOA, there will be homeowners association associated with the project. The homeowners association will maintain the front yards, the detention basin, the entry features, the recreation space, and theme fencing throughout the project. Other amenities of the project, there is a total of 18 varieties of housing types or housing elevation styles that will be part of the project. There's a mix of single-story and two-story units, and then the units are all very energy-efficient with all-electric appliances. Some of the amenities of the project, as I mentioned, there will be six open space lots, included some very large and vibrant entry features into the development, not only serve as a wonderful grand entrance, but also are preserving the large oak trees on the site. There's a lot preserved for passive recreation that will be on the west side of the site. There's some large green space for the detention basin that's a required amenity, but it's been developed into a site feature. And then there'll be several connections from the development to, not only to the school next door, but to the Sylvan Plaza, the city's center there where we have all the cylinder displays. So there'll be connections from the development to those areas. The visual representation of how the site would develop, on the top, you'd see the 94-lotted pattern with the green open space lots. So along the north, or the Street E, you can see the entrance. There's one, there's four large green open space entries where large oak trees are preserved. That will be one entrance in the development. And then Street A is a secondary entrance that is also preserving the large oak tree. And as you enter into the site from Street E, as you look straight ahead where the 4 is, that is the passive recreation park that we referred to. So entrance into the development, you'll see lots of green space, trees, existing well-preserved oak trees along with new plantings, and then you'll look visually straight into the open space recreation park. The blue dash lines show pedestrian connections, so how you could walk from, along Auburn Boulevard, the sidewalk, you can enter the development, Street E, you can traverse across the open space, across the street, through the open space lots, and eventually work your way out to where it says number two, which is the detention basin. And the detention basin also has walking trail around the top of that where those blue dash lines are. Also would connect you down to the open space lot that I referred to as number four. And then in that detention basin area, you'll see another blue area, that is the connection that would allow students to access the school site from the development without having to go to Auburn Boulevard. They can get to the school without having to walk all the way out to the development. And along the Boulevard, they'll have a gate that will be controlled by the school district. It'll be open in the morning time and then open in the afternoon time and then close at other hours, but it will allow the students easier access, safer access to the school. The visual representation down below shows a variety of what a visual street, the street representation of the homes would look like. Traveling, traveling down, you'll see that they're a single-story, there's a mix of two-story, different elevation materials, and no homes next to each other will be the same, so elevation and the styles will be mixed throughout the development. There's a visual representation of how it would look from Auburn Boulevard, so it's very important that this development did not really turn its back on the Boulevard, that this would activate the area. We did not want to see a sound wall and just rooftops as you're traveling down Auburn Boulevard. We wanted to see lively action and see houses and not just sound walls. So this shows how that would interface with Auburn Boulevard. So from the median there, you're looking across, currently there is the landscape strip adjacent to Auburn Boulevard, there's the existing sidewalk, and so there'll be another landscape planter, and then the theme fencing that will provide some definition of, you know, what's the public space versus the private space, and then the front yards, and then each home having its, having a porch. So the homes are about 22 feet away from the sidewalk, so really delineating between, you know, what's public and usable sidewalk to the private space. The detention basin, as I mentioned, is a required feature of the development for the collection of water during storm events, and then the filtering of the water before it enters into the drain system. So it's a required element, but spent a lot of time working with the developer on this site, really to make it a feature, to not only ensure that they're having the appropriate plantings in there as needed to do what's required in filtering the water, but really so it would be a visual interest from Auburn Boulevard for people traveling by and looking that way from the street or walking by the sidewalk, not to see just fields of grass there that, you know, in the summertime when it's hot, are, are dead. So there's a variety of mixture of plants, grasses, shrubs, trees, that will really provide a visual interest from the street, and then also provide the nice walking path around the basin for the residents or the community to utilize. As mentioned, there are, is an affordable component to this project. 14 homes are set aside for the lower-income. Fourteen homes are set aside for the lower-income families, and this is a requirement. So this property is currently owned by the City of Citrus Heights, where the property owner, Woodside, is the developer. But because the city owns the property, it does qualify under the Surplus Lands Act. And so the way the government code is, if the, if a jurisdiction owns land and is selling it, a surplus land, meaning they do no longer need it, if it's developed for residential, a percentage of the units must be held for lower-income families. So with it, for this particular project, since it is a for-sale development, the requirement is fifteen percent of the units, in this case that's fourteen, are held for lower-income families, and there'll be covenant placed on those properties while they remain in the program for forty-five years. So that will work through a contract, or through an affordable housing agreement between the city and the developer to ensure that that occurs. Earlier this year, we adopted, adopted our affordable home ownership guidelines that will help guide that process. And then this buyer and the city will also have an agreement to ensure that the buyer knows the restrictions of the unit, living there, and then, you know, what the future, when they live there, how that is handled, should they sell or move. So we go over all that with them, and we will help assist Woodside in making sure that their purchasers are meeting all the requirements. The project did go through the required environmental review process. An initial study was prepared as required for the project, and it was discovered that through, there were some potentials for, for environmental issues with the project or concerns. So studies were done to address those, but then it was, through the review of all the required environmental issues, those could all be reduced to what's called less than significant. So that allowed us to prepare the mitigated negative declaration. The MND that was provided to you was prepared in accordance with CEQA. As required, we did circulate that document for the required thirty days to a number of agencies and for the public. Comments were gathered from that, and then final comments were addressed in the, in the MND that was presented to you. Couple of mitigation measures. The, the MND had several mitigations that are very standard for development, and, you know, including, you know, dust control, noise control, all that, all those concerns that come up during construction, those are pretty standard, and those were all addressed through the MND. But one that came up that the developer will have to address was the traffic concerns. And so what will be proposed, what will happen to traffic changes with this project? There's two entrances, I mentioned, into the site. Both entrances are right-in, right-out only. Those will remain the same, shown there, the light blue arrows. So right-in from Auburn Boulevard, from traveling south on Auburn Boulevard at the Street A or Street E exit. And then with that, there will be improvements to the, the striped bicycle lane will be added. As you see, the green dash line will increase the bicycle striping for safe, more accessible bike lanes for people biking. The S's, there, there will be protected turn, right-turn buttons. So if pedestrians are entering those intersections at those turns, or those little pork chops, right now it's a free turn. So if there's a student in that island that wants to cross, they just go across the street and there, now there'll be a button that will stop, so traffic would stop, and then they would, they would cross the crosswalk to get to the other side. So that will be improved at each intersection, and then some timing also will be adjusted for the timing of the signals. The one item that did come up was, there was a concern that residents exiting the site would want to travel north on, on Auburn Boulevard, and so traditional standard would be you would take your right out of the development, you would go down to the intersection, get in the turn lane, and make a U-turn to travel north. As you can see, there is the open islands that are in front of the development, which are turn lanes in and out of, for the shopping center across the street. And so it was brought up as a concern that people in the development wishing to travel north kind of may, may take that charge to drive across those lanes and get in that turn lane real quick and make a U-turn to go north instead of going to the light. So we have put a condition on the project that we will, that area will be monitored, and if it's an issue, then we will, the developer will do some additional signage and improvements to that area to really try to alleviate that, alleviate that concern from happening. This shows that turn lane that was the concern, so the exit from the properties you see across the street, how they could dart across those lanes, get in that turn lane and make a U-turn instead of going to the light. So there is a sign there now that says no U-turns, but should that become an issue through observation, we, we may have to change that. As I mentioned, the city did purchase this property, really wanted to control what would happen here in the future. We felt the site was important enough for the city to acquire, so we could have more control about what happened there and choose the development partner. And so before we did that, before we released the offer memorandum for the community, development community, the city council did go through a series of land use, of goals that they established, so that when this property was put on the market, anyone interested in it would have a vision or have some ideas of what the city was looking for. So to highlight some of those, the council adopted goals on land use. One of the key goals was really for the property to consider its adjacency to the school, to the school and the cemetery. So this is a site that is adjacent to both those amenities, and that, and those should be considered as a site is developed. This project has done that with its pedestrian connections to the school, has considered its internal connections to the community, so it has taken into consideration its adjacencies. And if the housing, if the site was developed with housing, that it should be for-sale units designed for specific needs such as workforce housing, teacher housing, or similar type. So that was one of the adopted goals. This project's doing that by offering a variety of housing types and sizes. We have the alley-loaded, smaller homes, and then we have the single-story and two-story units, along with the fourteen units that are reserved for the lower income. So it is serving a variety of housing needs. Also was part of, was the concept goals for the site. One of the concept goals as a site was to be developed, you know, was really to enhance the pedestrian connections. We have the Sylvan Plaza, the city's little park there that really is underutilized because it's not really connected to anything. So this site, this project does consider that, and it's entered into, has created these pedestrian pathways throughout the site that will allow you to utilize that plaza. And then along, again, with the adjoining school property. One thing on that detention basin, you'll be able to walk around it. There is a path around the top that would then connect you out to the street, and then out to the pedestrian plaza. The design goals that were adopted and, you know, stated, you know, we want well-designed parking areas that are screened from, that are screened from Auburn Boulevard. It was important that the site didn't get developed as a parking lot, whether it be housing or commercial, that we didn't look at sea of asphalt. And so this does do that by fronting the homes onto Auburn Boulevard, really activating that space. The houses aren't, don't have their back turned to the Boulevard, and you're not, all the parking for those front, out, for those alley-loaded homes are in the back, so you don't see any driveways or garages from Auburn Boulevard. And as mentioned, the incorporation of the Sylvan Plaza into the design of the project, and then activating the buildings as we talked about. So those are all design goals that were included when we released the project for sale that we wanted a project to meet. And as mentioned, there is a general plan amendment for this to change the land use designation. So when we review projects, we look at how it compares to the general plan, and so it is meeting several goals of the general plan. Goal four, that's the state's ensuring the new development is compatible within the neighborhood, specifically Policy 4.5, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then Goal 24, about increasing home ownership opportunities. That's really been a goal since the city's incorporation, is how we find ways to increase home ownership. Goal 25, provide adequate sites for a variety of housing opportunities to serve all residents. I believe this is doing this as well, by providing the housing mix types, different sizes, as well as the units set aside for the lower incomes. And then the, you know, the encouragement of development of variety of housing design and styles. And then as I mentioned, general plan policy 4.5, this is one that we use when projects come into us that are requesting a rezone. We take rezones, we look at them in very in-depth, and we have this policy that says if you're requesting a rezone to increase the density of a site, we're only going to allow it if your project is providing superior design and enhanced community benefit. So if you own a site that's zoned RD five, where you could get five units per acre, but you want to build and get ten units per acre, just because you want to put more houses on the site, that doesn't meet General Plan Policy 4.5. We want superior design, we want there to be some community benefit for that. So this project meeting Policy 4.5, it is providing the pedestrian gate connections from within development, allowing students to access the school without having to walk along Auburn Boulevard. The layout takes advantage of the adjacent school plaza through the connected pass, the walking pass, and the numerous plants and trees surrounding the drainage basin, turning that required development feature into a community amenity. And then the homes fronting on Auburn Boulevard, they do provide a, provide a building elevations. They're designed to delineate themselves from the public right-of-way. They have fencing and landscaping, and really are activating that portion of the Boulevard. This project had extensive, robust public outreach. Even before there was a project and the city purchased the site, we did mail all the adjoining property owners a letter stating that we have purchased the site, the city has purchased the site. We will not be the developer, but we do intend it to sell, to sell it to some development in the future. So we did mail that, communicated to all the property owners in that area of our intention. And then after we received the application, same communications were sent to the owners. When we released it for, with the offer memorandum on the market, we were also notified the neighbors that we were putting it on for sale. We asked them to engage with us through the goal, creation of those goals that we talked about. So we did communicate with them for quite a while before we even knew what was going to be developed there. When we, this property went for sale on the market through the offer memorandum, we didn't know what we were going to have, but we did allow, we did let them know that we were going to be selling it. Once we did have a development interest and we, Woodside was selected, two community meetings were held earlier this year in January. Soon after we received an application, the Woodside did hold a community meeting to outreach to the neighbors, to show them their, their vision for the site. As I say, it was a newer application, so the city hadn't even completed its initial review at this time, but they got early feedback from the neighborhood and the community by holding the meetings. And then throughout the process, after we had a more formalized project, they held a second community meeting in August to present to them the revisions and the project that you see tonight. And as traditional methods of communication, the signs, site has been posted with our development sign, we've had it on the websites, articles in the newspaper. Up until today, we hadn't received any public comment on it or feedback, but we did receive some letters today, which have been shared with you at your chair. But that, at this point, that's what we have. And since this project includes some policies, a general plan, the rezone, this is your decision tonight, but we did go take this to the planning commission who reviewed the project. So they heard it on September thirteenth. They had many discussion items that are outlined here, what was talked about and clarified for the project. Ultimately, they reviewed it, and they are recommending that you approve the project. They, that recommendation on a four-to-one vote, and their recommendation of approval is forwarded to you tonight. They want to talk a little about the general plan, as that really is, you're, you're reviewing a general plan amendment. And so the general plan, as I mentioned, contains a lot of goals and policies that really kind of dictate our future and the city's vision, vision for the future. And so the goals in the general plan are really the direction center, and they provide our general direction of how we'll develop. Some of the goals, you know, they're abstract in nature, but no project is going to meet every goal. But in reviewing this through this extensive time, and over the past several months, the project is, is presented to you as consistent and supports many goals of the general plan. There are several motions, there's four very long motions whenever you're ready, but I have a feeling that's going to be a while. So thank you for that, and it was a lengthy presentation. Happy to clarify and answer any more questions that you have. The development team of Woodside Homes is here, my traffic partners are here too, so we're ready to talk.
Great. Thank you, Allison. I want to start by saying that I appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into this. This is a lot of work to be done here, and it's been a long time coming. So with that, and I, and I very much appreciate all the hard work that you've put in. So should we open the public hearing at this point, or any other clarifying questions from council?
What?
Yes?
This is a question for Allison. Your slide kept showing nine ADUs or DUIs or whatever they are. But the staff report says, I'm just trying to clarify this, the staff report says it's ninety-four units on six-point-eight-eight net acres, that's fourteen per acre, it says in the staff report. So is it nine or is it fourteen?
Sorry about that. Yes, it is nine units per acre using the eleven-point acre site.
So that includes the streets, then?
Yes.
So the net would be minus the streets?
Correct.
So that's six-point-eight-eight acres?
Correct.
That is ninety-four units, which is fourteen.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify, and thank you.
Any other clarifying questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a few, real quick. Why call one street or pavement an alley and another one a street? What's the difference?
Sure, okay. So the, the homes that face Auburn Boulevard, the alley-loaded ones where they have the rear entrance, the garages are in the back, those are accessed from the alley, and so those will be private streets maintained by the HOA. And then the streets are the public streets that will be public, city-maintained streets. So that's a mixture of private and public streets, similar to what you see in Mitchell Village. The smaller, narrower alleys are maintained by the HOA.
Hmm, that's interesting. And you mentioned HOA, I just wanted to clarify this. So this, this development, if we, if we did approve it, would have an HOA, an internal HOA, and they would be also in charge of all the landscaping, and so everything would be pretty much look, look the same. Individual homeowners would not have to go out and mow their ten-square-foot yard or anything like that, they just, it all gets done, right?
Correct. The front yards of all the properties, as well as that large detention basin, the maintenance of the open-space lots, including the health of the existing trees, are all, would all be part of the HOA management. So the front yards would all be manicured by the HOA.
And can you go to a picture, a slide that had the development that fronted, the portion that fronted Auburn Boulevard? Yep, right there. So that fence right there, I think you said that the front doors were twenty-two feet away from the sidewalk, and then there's a small portion of grass there by the, by the street. That would be a part of the development and in responsibility to the HOA?
The HOA would start, I think the back of the sidewalk would begin the HOA where the new landscaping is in front of the fence. That's part of the development and would be managed by the HOA.
So who's going to come out and cut that grass by the street?
Well, we do that, it's part of us now. It's the city, it's existing.
So that's, that's not part of somebody's property, then? That would be public property?
Correct, where the sidewalk. Where the sidewalk, and then the landscaping between Auburn Boulevard and the sidewalk is the city's.
Okay. And then that, that fence, I have deep concern, deep, deep, deep concerns about this area and the safety of people who live here. A vehicle going 45 miles an hour travels 66 feet in one second, one second. And is there a way that we can consider requiring having bollards put up along there? I don't think a fence is going to serve any real good purpose, cars are just going to go right through a wooden fence, probably, but bollards would stop cars. And I don't know if that's something that we can require at this point, but it certainly would make the lives of these people a whole lot safer if we can do that. And then my final thing is that, I don't know how deep, we were giving these CCNRs tonight, and I don't know how deep we can get into these at all, but one of the ones that caught my eye real quick was that there is a requirement, that a prohibition to any gates along the units that face the school. I, I think that's wrong. I think that's wrong, because I think kids can be very safe that live in these homes by simply going out their gates. My daughter goes to an elementary school and they're surrounded by homes, and there's several of them that have gates. Kids just come right onto the school ground, it's much safer. I don't really see why that would be a risk at all as far as to the school. If anybody wanted to do something nefarious from one of those homes, whether they had a gate or not, wouldn't be an issue. So I don't know if we can consider dropping that requirement and allowing people to put fence, excuse me, gates in their backyard so their kids can go directly to school. And that's it for now.
Any other questions? Okay, so I have a-
I have another question when you finish.
No, go ahead, Al.
So affordable, the affordable housing, this wasn't something I saw in the, so who's in charge of following up? You know, when we, when we're doing the Sayonara ones, we have an organization that's going to continue, and if the person needs to leave, they find another person. Is the city going to be in charge of all of that?
That is correct. The city will be responsible for-
So we're going to have to go find tenants, the buyers that qualify will-
We'll necessarily find the buyer, and the initial marketing of it, we will help Woodside identify buyers. We need to verify that they meet the income-
But once Woodside sells the, aren't they gone?
They are gone. So if it's resold, yes, we keep an interest list now of people looking for affordable houses?
So we'll be maintaining the records of all the people who live in the 14 homes and make sure they're current on their mortgage and all that.
Yeah, that'd be our obligation, and the project's condition that 3% of the sales price will help fund that effort on the city's behalf moving forward to make sure we have adequate staffing and resources to do so.
We'll probably have to hire new staff for that? Or do we have anybody available to do that?
We can work with our staff and/or consultants to help support our staff, similar to how we do our other, our low-income, our, sorry-
First-time home buyer.
First-time home buyer program or the repair programs.
So, okay, all right. So is there any requirement here that these properties be owner-occupied? Can they be rentals? Can they, does it, are there any-
We, there's not a current requirement for that, but the affordable ones cannot be, cannot be rented out.
Okay. And just, just for clarification, just for the, just as a reminder, when we put the property up for sale, how many offers did we get?
Just, just the one that I'm aware of.
Just one?
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't really select, we didn't select them, they selected us. So just a, just a point of clarification there, so. And, okay, I think that's all I have for now. So I'm going to go ahead and time to open the public hearing, correct?
The applicant is here, Mayor, too. Also, I believe they have a brief presentation as well.
What's that?
The applicant is here for a brief presentation as well.
So, yeah, can we, can we hear this, the applicant's presentation at this point?
Yes, and that can be part of the public, the, the, part of the public hearing.
Yeah, let's start with the, with the applicant's presentation, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mike LaFortun with Woodside Homes. We are very honored and excited to bring this residential community to the city. You know, it's been a long time, I know we've been working on this at very diff, for a very long time. What I want to do is I first want to compliment and thank your staff. They have done a tremendous job. I've done entitlements throughout the region and throughout the states, and this is definitely a first-class team, and I want to thank you for that, and they should be commended for all their hard work. So what we don't want to do is repeat the very extensive staff report and presentation. So I'm going to go very quick, and this will be the fourth time we've presented this project to the public. So there's a couple items that I've heard over and over again, and I just kind of wanted to address. So we're going to go kind of play a game of going very fast through these slides, but first of all, you can see the land plan here, which we're very excited about. I do want to address, early on in the process, there's a very nice blue oak heritage tree right at the entrance that we feel is very important to save. Our original plan was for 95 lots. It was suggested from staff, lose a lot, protect that tree. We worked with the arborist, we worked with our engineers, we've extended the size of the letter lot, think of it as landscape lot. So it is a fair-to-poor tree per the arborist's report. So we've agreed to mitigation that in the event something does happen to this tree over development, we'll probably mitigate it, whether it's because of development or just the age of the tree. But it was important us to really create a very nice sense of entry into this community. You can see the landscaping around the entrances to the alley lots, really to try, and we have landscaping on one side of the alleys, really just to make that feel to be attractive. Next slide, please. We've already addressed this. I think the bollard question, probably be more something to discuss, also for the safety of the pedestrians on the sidewalk, would, is the bollards go into the landscape strip right up against the curb? Then you're giving protection to the pedestrian on the sidewalk as well as the house. That could be something to think about. You already have the right-of-way and so forth in there. Next slide, please. Oh, I do want to compliment staff. We, as home builders, do not typically design architecture before we own a property. That's one of the reasons it took a little extra, it takes a while to do product. We're very excited that we get to present now what these beautiful homes will look like, so that's, was a positive. We have a variety of square footages, we have a variety of price points, and that's what we're excited about, providing housing that can be attainable for a much larger population than if this was a, a different community, some, you know, of larger homes and so forth. Next slide, please. So you can put on this slide, we did list all the various traffic mitigations. We understand traffic is a significant concern. It was a concern day one, it's still a concern, but the key is we are implementing all of the mitigation measures that the city's traffic study came prepared. We are keeping the level of service at the same pre-development level. So we, yes, there is, there's modest increase, but it is not making it to a failed intersection, it's not changing the LOS service to a different, downgrading it. Next slide, please. One of the key things was parking. It was very challenging. This is a small lot, and we wanted to make sure we could, having those alley loads to face the street as a requirement going in, created some design challenges. Parking is always a challenge in a small community. What we did is we shrunk the depths of some of our homes so that we could provide parking in the alleys. And so there is rows of parking, I think there's 22 stall, parking stalls on the backside of the alley, which is not usual. We have alley-load product in four different communities right now throughout the region, and none of them have parking in the alley. So we, city felt that was important early in the planning stage, we came up with a plan. Had questions, can you fit an SUV in the single-car garage? The answer is yes, there's a 10-by-20 clear space. We also had questions on the depth of the garages, can you fit an SUV, they're 20-foot depth. So we've really tried to think about all the key components, and staff's been really good about bringing up ideals and, hey, have you thought about this? Next slide, please. So we talked about the landscaping, I won't go through that, but it's really important that we are offering passive recreational. In the 11-acre site, you don't really get that too often. We have about a .2-acre recre, passive recreation, which is signified as number four. I'll show you some examples of what we feel that could look like. Next slide, please. Trees, trees are always a concern. We talked about maintaining as many of the large trees that we could. Yes, there is going to be approximately 38 trees being removed. We are going to plant 156 trees in compliance with the city's tree ordinance. And those were also, as we mentioned, the HOA will be maintaining the open space, the front yards. And so you can make sure and be confident that this community will look nice well after Woodside has sold the last house. Next slide, please. There's just some imitring, we talked, thought about what would look good, what would embrace the heritage, the history of the site, how can we make it inviting? Next slide, please. Different things that we can look at, fencing and so forth, monumentation, entryway features. Next slide, please. Thought it was really important also to think, you know, typically this comes much later down in the road, but what, what is the front yard landscaping going to look like? What is the backyard of the alley landscaping going to look like? So we, we've really spent a lot of time with staff finding, is this going to be a community that's going to look great day one, but also many years from now? Because we want to drive by as a Woodside home builder, that's my community. You guys want a beautiful community and a long one. We have shared goals and common interests in this community. This is a entry feature, it's kind of looked at how we can make it, we really want it to feel inviting, make it have an attractive appeal from the streets, but also as you're in there, you're proud of your community. You can see kind of the concepts that we looked at as the entry features. Next slide, please. So we have a couple paseos going in and out of the, by the detention basin, so we've thought about what those could look like. Next slide, please. Apologies, slow me down if you want, I just want to respect time. So this .2-acre approximate lot that we originally were going to put a house there, but we felt we needed an amenity for the community, really is going to have something, and these are just some art, some different furniture or equipment that we could have in there, different themes. This has not been approved by the city, we will come in with a amenity package to show what we're going to build there, what the HOA will take, just some ideals. It could be a great place to relax, a great place to read a book, you know, those concrete ping-pong tables are pretty popular in a lot of the parks that we're building. Next slide, please. So probably one of the biggest points of discussion has been this detention basin. And from day one, the city has been very clear that we have to make this not look like 95% of every other detention basin in the Sacramento region. We're a dry climate, very hot, we're a very hot climate. Basins have to serve their purpose, we've talked a lot of time. Could this be a dog park when it's not watering? Could it be a passive recreation? But there's slopes because it has to maintain water. So we felt that it wouldn't really be another passive accurate, active use within the basin itself. So we decided to put trails around it, put a fencing around it to make sure that, you know, everyone is safe. Next slide, please. But the aesthetics were most important. The corner, the Sylvan Corners is a very iconic location, and we want this to, this is where you'll be seeing the corner. We want to make sure that it's inviting, that it looks like we thought about it and it wasn't just a basin left there. So we have, this is coming in from the community into the basin area. We really have drought-tolerant landscaping theme and enhanced landscaping concept, really to make it feel like there's multiple layers. Still has a service function, but there's multiple layers of shrubs and rocks and other materials to make it inviting. Next slide, please. We also thought and we heard, how is this going to look from the streets? We wanted to make it look nice. So here's a 3D rendering of what you're going to see either as someone walking, riding a bike, driving, and you can kind of see, you know, will, the decorative fence and then the landscaping and the trees, it really is a continuation of the great work that's done at that corner. And we felt that was important because it's a lasting legacy on, hey, that was well thought out, no one's going to know that that's really a basin right there. Next slide, please. And this is just another, another rendition of what we had in there. So we heard about some of the things we talked about, we heard about the tree was concerned, we've heard the pros and cons of the alley. We think alley homes are something that's not suitable for everybody, but it's a great opportunity and a great housing opportunity for people. And there was a concern we had, well, there's not enough outdoor living space. Well, we understand that, it's a small lot, but there is over 633 outdoor indoor, outdoor space in your backyard. We even made sure that the garage, two gates so you can put your garbage can on either side. We really, staff has really made us think about all these components so that you're not stuck after approval to go, oh, we didn't think about that, or we need that. So we really have tried to, and staff has been really good about questioning us, is that going to work? So we do have slides that can show where the living space is, but, you know, that's, we're excited about this community, we feel we that, we're proud to provide housing for a very wide riot buyers. These price points, although we haven't come up with final pricing because we're still a ways before we do our grading and so forth, but it is going to be the workforce housing that was really part of the original goals. And we're proud, you know, we are offering affordable housing, we're doing income-restricted housing, we're building it. You know, that does not happen in a lot of communities, and we're proud of that. So we're very excited, appreciate that the patience, it's been a great, it's been a good process, very diligent. Like I said, they, they are very, very diligent, but we appreciate that, and I think that will come out to be a very good project. So I'll be available for obviously any questions, I can stay up here for a couple now or come back at your pleasure.
Great. Any questions?
I have questions. What makes a house affordable? You just put cheaper windows in, would happen?
No, you get a little bit, scale, size.
Scale?
You know, so a-
So all the, the affordable ones will be the one-stories?
No. So that's a great question. So staff, also it's, it's California law, we are not saying, so we are not going to cluster. The goal is that at the end of the day, no one knows which ones are deed-restricted or not. So they'll be intermixed, you already have policies that I can't put the same elevation next to each other. So they'll be intermixed, they're not going to be put in the corner or anything like that. You have the ability to have a variety of plans. So the price of the affordable housing is a, it's a math equation based on size, bedrooms, so forth. And so, no, there, there's not going to be-
So it's got smaller square foot inside?
So that, I was referring to the affordable housing.
Right.
All those plans that we are showing are eligible under the Affordable Housing Plan. The scale question on housing, you know, a 3,200-square-foot house with all brick in front or rock or stone is more expensive than a 1,600-square-foot house. And so there is viability on what we're doing in alley-load, because you're on a smaller lot. If this was all 65 lots, we'd probably have 3,500-square-foot houses, and those would be at a much higher price point. So it is a combination of lot sizes, the houses are appropriately sized for the lot. I mean, we couldn't fit a 4,000-square-foot house on these lots unless we're going maybe three stories, we're all restricted. So the, a lot goes into the price of the house, what you're putting on the facade, how big the house is, what, what, what do you, how many rooms you're putting out and so forth. So, did I, I don't know if I answered the question.
It has a lower market rate. It, it sells less.
I, well, I would say the pri, the, the sale, base sales price-
Is less.
For this one is, is more appropriate for the size of the lots that we're building on.
Yeah.
Great. I'll be available for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, because I know we have a couple of people, at least one person wants to speak on this. Do we have any written comments for?
I do have one written comment to read.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take the folks that are in person first, and so open the public hearing, and I want to call Forrest Allen to the, to the podium.
Good evening, council. Some of you know me, and there's a few that don't. I'm Forrest Allen, and I've lived on Cary Drive, which is just on the other side of most of this property, for 50 years. And so I'll just, I made up a little note here, but we are very congested because of the route that going to all three schools. And so this would mitigate even more compact for us. And so I looked up some of this on a general plan, so, so I'm starting it out with, my wife and I have lived here for 50 years. Our children attended the local schools, and all three of them, including Mesa Verde. We'd like to give you some views of the Sylvan Oak- We'd like to give you some views of the Sylvan Oak School proposal and why not, why it is not viable plan for our neighborhood or Citrus Heights. Before the city was, before the city improved Sylvan Corners, the city gathered the businesses and owners and homeowners along the Boulevard in, in my area. And they, we, we gave suggestions in groups and the, it, it went quite well. And then after it was implemented, the city plan, you could see that some of these things, including the towers that are standing right now, were part of it. So we do have questions about the property. It was not listed in Auburn corridor as a school after the school was taken down. The map shows all the way down from the, to the Sylvan Corners and that property was bypassed as far as the corridor, Auburn corridor. But, and it says that Sylvan Corners is an economic node and the school property is part of that and it was, it was labeled school or public at that time. And I don't know what the date was, but I looked up the general plan for policy 2.4 where it calls for preservation of individual neighborhoods and promoting a business community. And so the business community is actually around that node, which is Sylvan Corners. And it has been for years. In fact, it started in the 1800s when the miners or the, the goods were, were up to the, went up to the mountains. So this housing proposal is not a super design as some of them indicate. It will decrease our quality of life as residents on the Carriage, Canai, and anyone who uses these intersections to commute during those hours. When you put in the 94 houses and on 11 acres and next to a busy street, all of those people, they're going to have children going for probably one or maybe three of those schools. So they're, they're all going to have right turns going out, right turn at, at the intersection and a right turn on Carriage and up to Canai. And so Canai is a block right now. It is a jam up block. So we can't get out of our parking, out of our garage during those rush hours. We can't even back out. Those, those people, their parents, but they're just going so fast, they ignore us. So the homes would likely, let's see, where was I? Yeah, we can't back out. And I looked up policy 2.4, which says preserve individual neighborhoods and promote the prosperous business act, or the community. This development prohibits more of the prosperous business and it actually breaks it up. And it, and we looked up 29.2, which actually measures the, the amount of traffic flow and the, and it says it's, these are actually included in the morning, mid and daytime and afternoon hours. And I don't see how the city is going to actually maintain a flow with more people coming from that neighborhood. It's just impossible. So I, I, I really don't agree with the program myself and, and my wife. And there's a lot of neighbors and we have longtime neighbors. We've been there 50 years and we have a lady that's been there 60 years and she's raised, raised five kids there and she's still there. And so we have some old time neighbors and so this development just doesn't go with the same type and it just makes our street in particular and Canai and Loopy Lane, all three of them are going to be congested even more with at least, say, two kids from each family in there. So that's 200 more kids or so, and you're going to have maybe two cars per family. So I would say vote no on it, no matter what the state is actually trying to tell you to produce more family homes. It's, it's not viable.
Thank you, Forrest. All right. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? Natalie Price, please make your way to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff and neighbors. I did turn in a speaker card. As you said, my name is Natalie Price and although I do sit on the planning commission, I am here tonight as president of both Reach and Neighborhood Area 10. I want to be very clear that I am not speaking on behalf of the board tonight, but instead I stand before you at the bequest of community members to specifically advocate for the preservation of neighborhoods and quality of life for Citrus Heights residents. Citrus Heights was developed with neighborhoods in mind. After our incorporation in 1997, the city was divided into 11 areas. The proposed development is located in Neighborhood Area 2. I want to emphasize that I am pro humans having homes. I am pro housing. I am pro affordable housing. I am pro single and multifamily units, pro live work, pro mixed use, pro homes. I'm not a NIMBY. I understand and I agree that Citrus Heights needs to do our part to assist with meeting regional housing goals. However, the voices from the community that I have been hearing, the materials that I have read, and that discerning voice deep inside of me says it's not this development and not this corner. Our general plan, although seen by some as a loose outline for future development, was created and amended over the years to stay in agreement with community input. Frankly put, it's a reflection of the people. The general plan sets policies and actions to preserve and enhance quality of life for Citrus Heights residents, workers, merchants and visitors. I ask for these residents, without adequate yard space for entertaining nor protection from heavy Auburn Boulevard traffic to allow their children to play in a front yard, nor the ability to keep their windows open and not be burdened by the sounds of a prime city corridor. How high will their quality of life be? How well will our merchants across the way do as there's prohibitions on the amount of street parking, the placement of street parking? And when multiple families at holiday times have guests and that overflow parking becomes the other three corridors that already lack parking, what does that do to that business community? What happens when guests visit the families in their subdivision? What did Citrus Heights give those guests? Values of safe neighborhoods were reinforced when developing our general plan. This development blocks in the school, which brings new concerns of new threat opportunities and escape route availability. Again, I'm pro housing and I love that our general plan has goals to help with residential development. This project meets those housing goals. However, it is against many more goals than it is in alignment and I feel that this needs to be considered. Policy 2.4, preserve individual neighborhoods and promote a prosperous business community. Policy 3.1, recognize and reinforce the city's individual neighborhoods. Policy 3.3, preserve and enhance high levels of personal safety and security. Policy 4.3, discourage features in residential development that tend to isolate residents from a sense of integrated community. As stated, this development is in Area 2, but it's isolated from any neighbors. It's wedged in a commercial corner between a school and a cemetery. The overflow parking of guests will be a detriment to our business community. The houses along the roadway offer little protection from cars veering and non-middle school aged children still have to go on Auburn Boulevard to get to their schools, this time with more traffic, more impact. Policy 4.5, a critical aspect of approving the rezone of this public lot, states that there must be an enhanced community benefit to move forward. As you are aware, not many residents are as civically engaged as we would all like to see. And although it's not traditional public comment, a script, a quick scroll of social media comments on a recent Sentinel article titled 94 Homes at Sylvan Corners Will Be a Detriment to Citrus Heights shares concern of quality of life decline for our residents, frustrations over traffic, congestion, and again, the safety of our school aged children. All of the concerns that our general plan protect us from are listed. Some people ask me, Natalie, why are you wasting your time standing up and talking about a project that is a done deal? Well, call me a romantic, but I don't believe that this is a done deal. And I believe in we the people and a council that represents the voice of the people. I thank you for considering a no vote tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any more people like to speak on this item? Seeing none, city clerk, could you read the comment that you have?
So I have a written comment from Donna Brady. She states, I strongly oppose the addition of the 94 home housing development on Sylvan Corners at the former school site and totally agree with the statements of Sue and Forrest Allen. I too have lived off of Carriage Drive for many years and have experienced the horrendous traffic on Carriage Drive due to the schools on each end of the street. It's impossible to get on Carriage at times when school starts and ends and has become a dangerous street to travel at times. I also have a great appreciation of the history of this location and believe it should be used in a manner that respects that history and enhances the experience of current residents. There were many suggestions given by residents that included establishing facilities that would benefit the youth and community as a whole. I am not only concerned about increased traffic on Carriage Drive, but also on Auburn Boulevard and Old Auburn Road. It's already very dense at times between the Costco Walmart site up to Sunrise Boulevard on Auburn, on Old Auburn. It appears that the city leaders are entirely ignoring the quality of life of the current residents and care more about building dense housing in a city that has already reached its limits. I sincerely hope you will reconsider this housing development. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, does no one else would like to speak? And we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask council if they have any more questions or comments on this.
Comments, when you get to, when you get to comments, I have a comment.
Okay, we're to comments.
We're comments.
So if you have.
I have comments.
Question, no? Jane?
So we're looking at the general plan and the first requirement is to find the amendment would result in enhanced community benefit. I do not find that this project offers an enhanced community benefit. There's nothing about this project that benefits the current residents of Citrus Heights. All the design features discussed for all practical purposes benefit only the people that live there. The rest of us get increased traffic congestion, more demand on city services, more police maybe we'll need to hire, especially cumulatively with all the other new developments going on in the city and potential annexations. Any increased revenue from property taxes is more than negated by the cost of providing these city services. I also do not find that the amendment, to amend the general plan would be consistent with all the other provisions of the general plan, specifically goal three, which was not in the staff report, which was to maintain safe and high quality neighborhoods. Right before goal three, the general plan states the quality of life within individual neighborhoods directly correlates to the quality of life for the entire community. So what's the quality of life for people in this development? Inadequate yard space with no room for family or neighbors to get together, no room for barbecues, even family dogs, vegetables or flower garden. They are required to keep their garbage cans, including the swill buckets of organic waste, my favorite, in their garage. Please don't make me go in the garage. If they can squeeze the buckets around the cars. The alley loaded houses must keep their windows closed to reduce noise and pollution. And then I was thinking if they all got electric cars and, and you had the one car garage guy with the one story with the one car garage, they'd have to take turns moving their cars in and out to, to charge the car up at night. You know, get your car out, it's my turn to plug in. And so policy 3.1 that's under that goal recognizes and reinforces the city's individual neighborhoods by recognizing the neighborhood associations and the relationship the city has with these associations. And this project totally isolates these residents from the rest of Area 2. Other than the fact that the roads are open, this is a gated community. It's closed to the rest of the community, basically. I mean, you know, say it's open and you can go in there, but you have no reason to go in there. It's an isolated neighborhood. Goal four, which we did cite tonight in the staff report, ensures that new development is compatible in the neighborhood, within the neighborhoods. Policy 4.1 requires new residential development to maintain or enhance the positive characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood is Area 2. This is not integrated into that neighborhood and it's just totally isolated. I think that's its major flaw for this policy. Policy 4.2 is to ensure that decisions concerning land use and development are not detrimental to the positive character and identity of existing residential neighborhoods in Citrus Heights, which this does. And directly on point and not in the staff report is policy 4.3. Natalie, you missed that one. Discourage features in residential neighborhoods, in residential development that tend to isolate residents from the rest of an integrated community. And this definitely does do that. The major policy here though is we're asked to look at policy 4.5. The intent of 4.5 is to ensure that rezoned projects that result in an increase of residential density that has a superior design as opposed to what they call, as opposed to standard development. So I'm not sure what the difference is, standard development or superior design, but that's superior design. And then it's also the intent that it won't impact any existing losses or issues, I'm sorry, any existing issues that are already present in the neighborhood. So the burden is on, on the applicant to show the superior design. He says it's superior design, that doesn't make it so. So I'm looking, what is the superior design? So you've got to look at more just the drawings, the colors, the elevations, the site amenities, those are all nice, but here's what else they have. No yards, no real side yard, no room for your dog unless it's a chihuahua or a yorkie, no room for a garden, maybe you could put a pot on your doorstep, no room for a family get together, you can schlep all your stuff down to the big green area and carry all your dishes and forks and spoons, maybe have something down there. They have to crowd the garage with the garbage cans. This is superior development, I am not sure. The houses that front Auburn Boulevard can't open their windows. They're, they're given double panes and extra insulation for the noise, whoopee. They're isolated from the rest of the neighborhood. The overall design to me is not superior. I'm not even sure if it's better than standard development. The existing issues, we've heard about the traffic congestion from the school traffic, especially for Mesa and Carriage Elementary. So I don't believe this is superior design. I don't believe there's enhanced community benefits, because I've already mentioned some of those. And thirdly, the project has to be found to be not detrimental to the public health, interest, safety and convenience and welfare of the city. And the access gate only goes to the middle school, as pointed out. The elementary and the high school age kids still have to walk down Auburn Boulevard to Canai or down Auburn to Carriage to get to school. And there's probably going to be a bunch of those kids in that development that have to do that. So I think that's a danger to the kids that they don't currently have, probably live somewhere else now, parents drive them to their school, they're safer in their, in their mom's car than they are walking down Auburn Boulevard. They're safer in their, in their mom's car than they are walking down Auburn Boulevard. And I think the increased noise to the rest of the community, the increased traffic, the increased pollution from their auto emissions. We talked about putting the bollards up, that helps a little on that safety. I find the proposed project is detrimental to the public health, safety, and convenience and welfare of the city. So then I looked at Goal 10. Goal 10 says to achieve attractive, inviting, and functional corridors. And it does show Sylvan Corners as a major corridor. 10-2, Policy 10-2, is to design buildings to revitalize streets and public spaces and to enhance, enhance a sense of community and personal safety. So then the general plan also called for a specific plan to be developed for Auburn Boulevard from Sylvan Corners to the northern city limits to implement the general plan. So quoting from the plan, it says, "The specific plan must be consistent with the general plan, and in turn, all city development approvals and actions must by law be consistent with this specific plan as well as the general plan." So then I looked at the Auburn specific plan. There's four districts. This district is called the Sylvan Corners Village Square District. The land use concept for this section includes a pedestrian-friendly shopping environment that reestablishes Sylvan Corners' tradition as a social and commercial focal point. Potential for a drugstore, pharmacy, a large family-style restaurant, whatever, whatever. They just say suggestions. On the land use policy, number nine, is the guiding principle for land use for Sylvan Corners Village Square is, "Reestablish Sylvan Corners as a distinctive focal point of civic, social, and commercial activities." The Policy 11 declares, "Develop vibrant, commercial, recreational, and civic places that will make Auburn Boulevard a destination." Number 13 states, "Design all new developments to provide strong functional links among the Boulevard districts and neighborhood centers to adjacent neighborhoods and to the community of Citrus Heights and to the region." This project does no such thing. And then if you go to the community design page 2-11 of the Auburn Boulevard plan, the urban design concept for Sylvan Corners stresses the creation of a shopping district. The goal is to establish a walking destination that has interconnected groups of storefronts and parking lots. And this project wipes out the Auburn Boulevard plan. And as far as the consistency with all the other goals that are quoted, policies and goals that are quoted, there's a little quote in the bottom of the staff report where the court said, "The nature of the policy and the nature of the inconsistency are critical factors to consider. A project is clearly inconsistent when it conflicts with one or more specific, fundamental, and mandatory policies of the general plan." For all the foregoing reasons, I don't support this project. That's the end of my comment.
Okay.
I wrote it down because I knew I couldn't say all that in two seconds.
Vice Mayor.
I don't want to follow that, geez. I think Janie made some very good points there, very, very good points. I think we're, you know, the enhanced community benefit aspect is just like on thin ice. It's just barely there, if that. And I haven't made a decision. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm still like, I don't know what I'm going to do here yet when we come to vote. But I'll tell you what I won't do is I certainly will not support the tentative subdivision map unless we come to an agreement, and I don't know how deep we have to do that with the issue of bollards or whatever to protect the homes along Auburn Boulevard. So I don't know if other council members need to chime in on that or what, but, and I don't know if we can make that decision later, whether it's within the property of the actual subdivision or whether it's along the, near the street of the area that I guess the city will own, which, don't understand that. But one or the other has to happen for me even to consider approving the tentative map, the subdivision map. And that's it for now.
Jane? Nothing? Portia?
Just, I hear the concerns of the community, and I understand it. And I want to be clear that, you know, when I started this almost a decade ago as a planning commissioner, second term on the council, these concerns and the comments that are made have been made consistently. I can go back from my Rolodex, I'm getting close to 40, so my memory ain't that great no more. I've got two kids, so they were, we were thin. But same comments were made about Mitchell Village. We took a golf course that wasn't being utilized and we turned it into housing. And we had a big outcry about, that's not right, that's not good, it's isolating the community. And what do we know? We have people there, and they've reactivated that marketplace area right over there by where the Staples is, they utilized the park across the street. I live in that same area. I live a block, you know, maybe two blocks from Sayonara Drive. We heard the same comments when it came to the little small area between Sayonara and Locur, where they developed like nine, 10 little homes there. You're overcrowding. There, you know, we don't need any new houses in our neighborhood. If you want more participation in your neighborhood associations, we're going to have to build housing for people to live in. As far as I can see, I see the same folks come to my council meetings, y'all ain't moving out. That means we have to build more housing in order to keep our communities vibrant. We had the same issue when it came to our 100% affordable housing project, Sunrise Point. Same comments. I think there is, Citrus Heights is 26, 27 years old. It's time for us to grow, and growing is painful. But we have to grow and we have to accommodate that folks that are not, that haven't lived here for 50 or 60 years. I've been here only 10 years. We have to accommodate for folks who may not want a large yard. I have a large front yard. I hate mowing my lawn every Saturday. It just irks the life out of me. We have to offer people a variety of opportunities and let them make the decision on how, how well, how much they want to be involved in their community, whether it's a lot, like we all are engaged, or a little bit. But for us to, to single-handedly, as people who are deeply entrenched in our communities, to say that this isn't what other people want is inherently wrong. We have to be a little bit more courageous and a little bit more thoughtful about what it is we're trying to attract into our communities and build that to bring it into our communities so we can continue to grow and thrive.
Any other comments? Okay, so some really compelling arguments tonight. Janie, you really did your homework. Really impressive. And I would have to say that I'm very compelled by a lot of those points that you made. I'm also compelled by what I heard from public comment here. And I'm here to represent the community. And it's a tough decision because I, there's a lot of things I like about this project, but it's just not quite enough for me to support it. So, do we have a motion? Do we, do you have a motion? Let's see what, let's see how it goes.
Can we get some clarification?
Yes, some clarification for Vice Mayor.
What happens if we do not support this?
If, if the council were to deny the project, it would end the entitlement process for that. And our, just for FYI, the policy is that that site would be restricted from proceeding with another entitlement type for a period of one year.
That's just a policy, though, you're saying, right?
What's on the line here?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the zoning code, yes.
Which can be changed.
Can you back up and clarify what you, so for, explain that a little bit more to me?
The zoning code has a provision that if the council or deciding bodies to deny an application, that that application for that property cannot proceed forward or come back in again to the city for a period of one year.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's specific to that application. You could get another application.
Right.
And we have to go, right, you have, if you don't approve the zoning, don't approve the special plan amendment, the current zoning, the current general plan stays in place. It could come back and the council could consider other rezone, another application down the road. But if it's denied, then it just reverts back to what it is now.
The other kind of option for council is to provide direction and continue it with that direction if that's the pleasure of the council.
Though I would say, I hear your point is, I think what's before the council is this project. So you could give some direction, but really, that's probably more a future agenda item at the end of this meeting. If you want us to, you could tell us to come back, and we could bring something back.
All right, so can I, anybody want to offer a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do it. I move to adopt a resolution of the City Council of Citrus, City of Citrus Heights adopting a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for the Sylvan Corners Project located at 7137 Auburn Boulevard.
You take the motions one at a time, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a question on the motion.
Question, motion?
Just want to make sure that if we approve one portion of these motions, it doesn't mean that we can't oppose another portion.
That's correct. And it's, the order is a little unique in the sense, we're starting with the environmental document, the mitigated negative declaration. That was really not a discussion tonight. So it could be that everybody supports that, and we'll see how it goes with the other ones. Now, there was a discussion about the bollards. So I don't think that's relevant really to this MND question here, but I don't know if, as it gets down to the other motions, you may want that explained. From my perspective, there's a couple options. One is, obviously, the city could put bollards in, in its own area, from the, from the sidewalks to the curb. We own that land, it'd be our expense, we can maintain. If you want the developer to take care of it on the other end, that would be something you'd have, we'd have to discuss with them and have that incorporate. I suppose you could add that to the motion under number two, since that is where the tentative subdivision map is, if someone wants to make that motion.
Aren't the traffic issues involved in the mitigated negative declaration? Because there was recommendations to mitigate the impact of all the traffic, if you think those are sufficient.
Yeah, that's a good point. That is part of this discussion here with the environmental document.
So can I have a roll call vote, please? As we have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
No.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer?
No. Next motion, please.
I move to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights adopting a general plan map amendment approving a tentative subdivision map, design review permit, and tree permit for the Sylvan Corners Project located at 7137 Auburn Boulevard, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
No.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
No.
Mayor Schaefer?
No.
Well, Mayor, with, with, with that vote, I don't, I don't see that motions three and four are relevant at this point. We could still take them for this, I, I see that the rest, the project is, has not been approved based on this motion. So I would say that the rest of the motions are irrelevant to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. So.
Unless staff thinks otherwise, I don't, Director Kemp and I?
All right, so that's the, so motion does not pass, and we move on to the next item, please.
The next item is department reports, and there are none. The next item is city manager items, and there are none. Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Okay, so we have an item, Brett Daniels would like to bring.
Yeah, I just want to see if we can get some council support for the issue that was brought up earlier about the, the dog licenses and bringing that back.
Oh, I'll support that.
Okay, I thought you might.
I thought we might bring it to the Quality of Life Committee, which I serve on. I'm happy to participate in that.
I don't know if you even need that, but I think we should bring that back. I don't understand why we have to have more than one license ever for a pet, that's.
No, you didn't get the point. You can get a lifetime license for a cat and not for a dog.
All right, and I do have an item I'd like to bring forward, and hopefully I'll get support from my other council members. I would like to bring forward an item that where we develop a resolution to support the transfer, or the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act that will be on the ballot next year. I'd like that to brought, be brought forward on August, or sorry, October 26th.
I'll support that.
Me too.
Thank you. With that, next item, please.
There are no further items.
Great, this meeting is adjourned.